Thank you. It is Monday, August 5th at 7:30, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Tony, can you please call the roll?
Chesak.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Johnson. Bevins.
Here.
Baddo.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Chesak, or motion by Oday, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline is there, second. Second by Oday. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
Chesak.
Yes.
Oday.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Bevins.
Here.
Yes. All right. The consent calendar is adopted. Next is item six. We have a presentation on our audit by Clifton Larson Allen, Connie Hillman, our finance director, Barry Reedy, our auditor. And I presume this is why everybody's here.
Right. I was hoping you'd let all those go first and then us. No, thank you for having me tonight. A little bit later this year, just timing, schedule-wise conflict there. Everything got out on time. Should be, you know, status quo. So that's good news if you're in that seat. You should have received the audit reports. Some good nighttime reading there. But if you read that first section, MDNA, it really walks through what happened throughout the year, kind of in Word format, few graphs in there. And then we have the PowerPoint, which we will go through. Again, everything from the PowerPoint ties back to the financial statements. PowerPoint's a little bit easier, gives you some financial bases year over year, about five years that we do a comparison. Feel free to stop us at any time during the presentation. For sure, it can be open dialogue with questions and answers as well. So we'll go there. We'll start with the PowerPoint. So page two, we'll go through some required communications, the audit results, financial results, and then any other discussions, insights, observation that came from the audit. Page three here, so our required communications. We go over this each year. Our primary responsibility is find an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements presented. We do review internal accounting controls. We want to make sure that the city has controls and that they're in place and working. We don't test every transaction. We still wouldn't be done if we did that. So we do some detail level testing and then some comparisons, current year to prior year, current year to budget. If anything looks out of the ordinary, we do more testing on those items. We do test your federal awards. So you spent over $750,000 of federal dollars this year. So we did test the airport improvement program with no findings there, as you'll see in just a few slides. Significant accounting policies, those are going to be outlined in note one. Little bit of an unusual transaction just this year. BPU is now considered an enterprise fund of the city. So when you look, you'll have three enterprise funds, and it comes off of the government-wide as a component unit. With that, about three years ago, we were required to put BPU's debt on the city's books. Now that comes off and goes right to BPU. So we restated the debt service fund as well to remove that, which is now fully shown on your BPU enterprise fund. Okay. Now going forward, should be status quo, and then it'll be reported like that year over year. New standards, Gatsby 96, so that's subscription-based information technology agreements. Kind of went hand-in-hand with the lease agreements last year. This is anything online. So anything the city enters into over a year online, we have to assess it and potentially book it as an asset. Page four, within the bound documents, you are going to see some judgments and accounting estimates there. Useful lives of capital assets, we talk about. Not sure how long those lives will last, and so that affects depreciation as well. Other post-employment benefits payable, and then your net pension liability. So your para liability gets assessed each year, and then we book that amount. If the state were ever to fully fund that, you would actually show an asset on your books as well. One corrected and uncorrected adjustment. Here, we noted when testing the special assessments receivable, within the fund level, they were overstated by $516,000. Offset on the fund level was deferred revenue, so a net of zero there. When you roll it up into government-wide, that deferred revenue goes away. So a $516,000 adjustment was made to your governmental activities, and we did flow that through current year. No disagreements with management. Page five.
Mr. Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
Yes, excuse me. Could you explain the $500,000 plus whatever that was, the, what was correct, where that was at, again?
Yes. Do you want to, Connie, do you want to?
So that adjustment has to do with our special assessments. And what we always did when the debt was paid off, if there was any offsetting assessments, we rolled it into Fund 400. So I've been trying to balance out this large assessment receivable that we have in 400 to actually identify what it could be. So I had that done at the end of 2022. In 2023, I realized that there was a $516,000 that had been collected previously. So I'd gone back and rebuilt it from schedules. And so at the fund level, there was a net zero. But when you go to the government-wide financial statements, that's where the adjustment came through. And like Mary said, we ran it through the current year adjustments.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Connie.
So page five, then. These are just basic communication here. No difficulty in counter-inform the audit. Connie and her group do very well. They seem to like to get us in and out of here. I don't know why. But everything goes pretty good. Overall city audit results here, an unmodified or a clean opinion on the basic financial statements, so highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give. No findings noted over the financial reporting. Again, major program that we tested was Airport Improvement Project, and no findings noted there. So very clean program. Minnesota Leo compliance, we test about seven areas, and there were no findings there either.
So now we'll go to slide seven, Sean. Right, so the fund balance is approximately $3,896,000, of which $2,775,000 is unassigned and can be used for operations. Our operating expenditures for 2023 were $13,65,000. We're approximately 21% of our 2023 expenditures in unassigned fund balance, and we are out of compliance with our goal, which is to be at 35% to 50%. We were projecting to be around 29%, but the $1 million from BPU to pay the lawsuit cannot be recognized as revenue since we reclassified the utility department as a department instead of a component unit. The next slide is a bar graph that shows the actual general fund revenues versus the budgeted revenues. And the biggest difference between the actual and budgeted are the intergovernmental revenue. We did receive the one-time public aid, safety aid, as well of our investments because we have to market our fair market value adjustments at the end of the year, where we don't recognize that in budget because we aren't going to realize that gain or loss because we're going to hold them to maturity.
President Bevins. Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Would you please just tell me the difference between the actual and the budget?
Total. We will get back to it in the next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope. A couple of slides, I guess, Jeff, it is. This graph is, shows the actual general fund budgeted expenditures versus budget versus actual. And again, the biggest difference is in capital outlay and debt service, and this has to do with how we report leases. We budget the lease as expenditures, but we need to record it as a capital outlay and debt service for financial reporting purposes. So Jeff, this is our general fund results. Our actual results show revenues exceeding expenditures by $1,240,556, when we were budgeting revenues to exceed expenditures by $15,000. So when we're going to, the next slide, we'll take a look at the differences and why we were $1,225,000 off from the budget. So if we go to the next slide, we have the actual that was reported in the audit is the $1,240,000. We have to report the Fund 217, the city economic development and our CAFE plan, as part of our general fund for reporting purposes. So if we move that out, we do some adjustments for, like for example, the airport transfer and the transfer to mayor contingencies. We budget that as a transfer out, but we have to report it as revenue and expenditure for audit purposes. The adjustment for leases and the adjustment for para, our actual performance compared to budget is $2 million, or excuse me, $1,242,986, revenues exceeding expenditures. Again, I want to get to, why did we only budget $15 million and we ended up over a million, or $15,000, ended up over a million. Well, we had $477,000 of one-time income for the lawsuit settlement that was not budgeted. This time, our investments were higher than the carrying value, so we had a positive fair market value adjustment. But again, we're not going to realize that gain, so I subtracted that out. Our one-time public safety aid of $642,000, and then I missed the transfer to the fire capital in 2023, which will go through in 2024. So our actual performance, when you want to look at budget, is expenditures exceed revenues by $126,364. And the biggest reason for that is the public safety, where we budgeted for 25 and a half out, 25.5 officers, but we got to 27 officers in September, and we're at 26 for most of the year. If we go to the next slide, we have our number of days of our fund balance that we have. We're at 75 of the 183 days. You can see in 2022, we were only at 72 days that we needed that was due to the lawsuit. We focus on the number of days of expenditures and unclassified fund balance because the city doesn't receive its majority source of revenue, for example, taxes, until July. And so the range is between 35% and 50%, and that is the recommendation of the state auditor. Our next slide is bar graphs of our revenues over years. There's not a lot of change in the bar graphs from 2022 to 2023, other than investments, and then asset due to our adjustment for market value. If you recall, last year, we had a loss of over half a million. Now we have a positive $128,000. If we look at total expenditures, you see that general fund decreased. Again, it has to do with the lawsuit. And you see a large decrease in our principal and interest and fiscal charges, and that was the change of how we report BPU. Our debt service available to cash balance, again, we still see significant cash over our debt payment that's due in February. We're getting a lot more in prepaid assessments, meaning that we're not certifying them to the county and getting them collected over 10 years. If we were to use all the assessments in the year that they were collected, the next year, we'd have to have a significant increase to our debt service levy. Staff has been discussing with Baker Tilly, as this could have an arbitrage impact in the future, since now interest rates have gone up. However, Baker Tilly does agree with how we are determining our levy, that we take 1/10 of the assessments over the life of the bond. If we look at the total city debt, you see a large decrease. There's no balance in 2023 for Geo, for Build America bonds and the Geo revenue bonds. Again, it has to do with BPU. And you can see the increase when we started reporting them, which was in 2021. So over those years, as Mary addressed. The last slide that I'll go over with is our enterprise funds, which now we have three, sanitary, storm sewer, and public utilities. All three enterprise funds had a positive operating income, as well as a positive change in net position for the year.
Perfect. So just a few follow-up comments from Connie. Overall, audit results are positive, as you can see, even the financials doing well in each of those funds. No findings on the single audits. Staff are very responsive. Audit increase in request. And then the state reporting form is required to be submitted to the state along with the audit. Those got submitted timely, and then the GFOA certificate was applied for timely as well. Fund balance reserves, as Connie mentioned, 21% in 2023, and then short of the 35% to 50% policy. Okay. Next page, the revolving loan fund had positive change in fund balance. So here, you received about $19,000 in loan repayments, so it just goes back to that fund. Debt service has restricted fund balance of about $1.8 million. Expenditures of about $1.2 million this year. The restatement is due to BPU, like we talked about, so we removed that debt off of there. Fund balance did decrease, just like Connie said, fluctuation of the collection of the special assessments, which is why you take some of that over time. Capital projects fund has an assigned fund balance of approximately $3 million, with expenditures this year of about $5 million. So a lot of that funding comes through transfers, taxes, and intergovernmental, about $4.5 million there. And then you did issue about $2.2 million in new Geo special assessment bonds to help fund some of those projects. So overall, very clean. As we go through to do the audit, usually minimal to no adjustments. So the information you're getting on a month-to-month basis is accurate. You can make informed decisions with that information. Now, any follow-up questions?
Any questions from our auditor or finance department?
President Bevins.
Mr. Chesak.
And I don't mean this to be pejorative in any way. So when I ask this question, don't think it's something negative. I just was curious, when you're hired to do the audit, and why do we get the report partially from Connie?
Because she is your finance person.
And then that, I mean, if, say she wasn't able to make it tonight, you would have just have done it.
Yes.
Okay. That's, thank you.
And the part that I go over with, Jeff, is the results, where Mary goes after, reports on the required communication done by the auditors.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Do we need to accept the audit? All right. So we're looking for a motion.
Accept the audit, Mr. Bevins.
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Stingline to accept the audit. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The audit presentation has been accepted. Tony, please note that Gabe Johnson is now here. Okay, item seven is council committee reports. Seven A is Safety and Public Works Committee Chair Mike Oday.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had two items tonight. First item was discussion on administration of code violations and screened yards. Motion coming out of committee was to direct staff to continue on and make no changes to our code enforcement based on the appeals process that we had last week, and I so moved, or
Second.
Three weeks ago, sorry.
We have a motion by Oday, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
We had an individual reach out based on that appeals process that we went through last week regarding screened violations behind a six-foot fence or seven-foot fence. They had concerns that it would be confusing for staff going forward and change the way that we enforce our codes. We had some discussion regarding that, and we, all three decided, we agreed that we don't want to change anything about the way we enforce our codes, and the decision was made, but it probably wouldn't be made that way again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, Mr. Bevins, I remember, I think I made the motion to grant the appeal, and it was, as Chair Oday indicated, it may not have gone the same way had I known what I know now. I failed to ask the proper question, the length of the grass, I didn't realize. And if, if I could redo my vote, I would. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to direct staff to continue handling the nuisance complaints the way we always have.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second final item for Safety and Public Works was just directed, direction on active code enforcement cases. This was just one active code enforcement case at 620 Second Avenue Northeast. And motion coming out of committee was to go with staff's recommendation to, let me find this here. I believe it was to obtain a search warrant and abate for abatement and/or towing of the vehicle, and I so moved.
We have a motion by Oday. Is there
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
End of report.
Thank you very much. We'll move along to item 7B, Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 13 items on our agenda, the first of which is the 2024 Fire Department Relief Association Annual Report, and the motion is to authorize staff to sign the annual reports.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
No, 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 no. You can't do Stingline. That's wrong.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Wrong end of the table.
I'm sorry. Stunek.
That'd be me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My apologies.
No problem.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
The only thing of note is the pension fund is in a good position, so we are authorizing increasing the payout of years per service from $14,000 to statutory maximum of $15,000 per year of service.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay. Next up is a regional funding application, and the motion is to authorize the fire department to participate in the Sourcewell Impact Funding Application with the Crosslake Fire Department.
Second.
Now, what do I do, chief?
You're, we're, we're on track again, though.
All right. Motion by Johnson, second by Terry.
We have 13 days.
Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
This is our fire department working with Crosslake and two other departments to request $250,000 from Sourcewell to help purchase some 800 megahertz radios.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Yes, Mr. Chesak.
Is there any way we can get, like, and I should have called the chief and asked him, but I think our share in this is 50-something, or 46, or 56-something thousand. Is that somewhere around the ballpark, I understand?
Sounds right.
Mr. Cox, anything you'd like to add? No.
Yeah, it sounds about right, he says. Okay. What percentage is that of the total package comparatively to the other entities? Is it equal split, or?
I believe so.
Okay.
Public safety.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Chief Holmes is not available tonight, so.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify. I think, Jeff, you're looking at the next item on the agenda.
I think you're right, too, now that I see that. Sorry about that.
All right.
My apologies.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Please proceed. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is to authorize the fire department to apply for Sourcewell 2425 public safety match funding. And the motion is to approve the fire department to apply for Sourcewell public safety matching and to authorize appropriate signatures. I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman Johnson.
So this one will have a $12,500 match, and $50,000 will come from Sourcewell. We received an $8,800 donation from the Fire Department Relief Association, so we'll be using $3,700 from the operating budget of the fire department for this grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I know you want to.
Actually, this was, I, I was, I was referring to the one that Chief Davis brought to your committee. That's the, uh.
I called Chief Stunek Tiffany Stingline, so don't feel bad.
I call you Mayor.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, now we're here, Jeff.
Thank you.
This is, this is the approval of funding for police department records, records management system. And the motion is to approve the police department to apply for Sourcewell third-party services $20,000 reimbursement, and use the public safety aid package to pay the remaining balance for the 2025 RMS expenses, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
So the chief could better explain this than I, but essentially, we pretty much have to find a new system because the one we use is going, what, not going to be serviced anymore?
Ancient.
So, and it's ancient, so we gotta, we gotta do a new one. And we work with the county and all the other municipalities in the county to have the same system, so we're just kind of one, one part of the group. But we've got to upgrade it to something, and this is what they're recommending. But any, any questions Jeff has, you can go, go to the chief. I don't know the answer.
Mr. Chesak.
As I understand, all law enforcement throughout Crow Wing County are participating. Is there some sort of a breakdown of share in, Chief, regarding the size of the population of each, or is it just an even split?
Sure. Good question. So of the 10 law enforcement agencies, nine are police departments, one is the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department is taking a significantly heavier load on the payment of this for a couple of different reasons. They're the one entity that has the jail, has the dispatch center, has a lot of other responsibilities and functions that the other nine agencies don't have. So the sheriff's department is solely financing those separate items that are exclusive to them. And then as far as the remainder, the company charges based on the amount of officers. So each department is paying their portion simply based on the size of their department, if that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is the approval of use of the statewide affordable housing aid. And the motion was to reward $88,000 to Habitat for Humanity as requested for their three single-family home projects, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, this had come to us before, and we asked them, we asked staff to put it out to the public so other people could, other developers could bid on it other than just Habitat. We did receive a second one. We reviewed them both in committee, and we thought the Habitat project was, was the best solution for housing in our community.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Chair Terry.
I was not able to be a part of that meeting. I was trapped in my cul-de-sac doing, due to construction issues. And I wasn't able to view it online, so I apologize to Chairman Johnson. I would prefer to see item, or option three, to support both of the grant applications, and so I'll be voting no on this motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is option one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to approve requests of long-term maintenance funds for Lum Park Pavilion 1. And the motion is to authorize $23,000 of the long-term maintenance fund to complete the remaining rehab work on Pavilion 1 in Lum Park, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
So they're doing some work in Lum Park, and then kind of hitting the tip of their budget, but there's some preventative maintenance work, like FASHA and SOFITS and whatnot that they need to do. So the park board is requesting $23,000 of that, from that Capital Park Fund that we set aside, we have, and, and the motion is to approve it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay. Next up is the update on the environmental resource technician that we've been talking about for over a year now. And the motion is to ratify the hiring of Kelly Robinson for the ERT position effective July 29th, further that she be placed on step one of the environmental resource technician wage. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Okay, so I didn't know, did Baxter approve this as well already, or is that up on their upcoming meeting?
Yes. I'm seeing people nod their heads.
Do they have a say in who gets hired here? Is that my guess of my question?
Let's ask Mr. Dean, our city engineer, public works director.
Assistant City Engineer Trevor Thompson participated in the interview process and coordinated with the selection of the hire.
Okay, that, did the city council and Baxter then have to approve this, is my question, I guess?
I don't think, it's a city of Brainerd employee.
Correct.
So I think just, we approved this. Baxter participated in the interview process, so they had stakeholder at the table. But it's our employee. We're responsible for all the employment stuff.
Okay, and I know when we agreed to do this, there was some issue of some other costs that weren't specifically spelled out. You know, you other costs that weren't specifically spelled out, um, you know, you, just various things, I, I, I don't think we ever specifically voted on those items, that the expenses that the city would incur, um, can I ask staff, what, has that all been, uh, uh, sort of documented? Will be tracked as far as, you know, different, uh, I know, I know I got in the kind of the weeds like office supplies, but I'm talking like maintenance of the vehicle, uh, fuel, that type of thing, is that going to be tracked?
Mr. Dean?
Sheriff Baxter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chesak, so all the, uh, expenses that are going to be allocated to Ms. Robinson specifically, uh, will be identified and kept separately to be split with Baxter, it's actually a conversation that, uh, Connie Hillman and I had today, was identifying those expenses and, uh, keeping track of them, uh, routinely through the year.
Okay, and is, is this, uh, evaluated then by both cities, this employee?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
You mean like a performance evaluation?
Yeah.
As it's our employee, we would be doing the performance evaluation, we would look at, uh, getting, you know, input from the Baxter staff as, as part of that process.
And it's a three-year, um, three-year gig here, right?
I believe it was a three-year term, yep.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got.
Sure, any further discussion, Chairman Johnson?
I guess, I have one more, since we're asking questions of staff, are we, over the three years, going to track the amount of time, I know that we're expecting it'll be fifty percent Brainerd, fifty percent Baxter, but are we going to track that, so in future years going forward, we have the percentages better figured out?
Yes, sir, we're going to track the hours, and the actually, and intent is to try and balance her time fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, we are over half done. Next up is to ratify the hiring of Christopher Evans as Public Utilities Director, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Christopher Evans as our Public Utility Director at step four with an August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four start date, and to allow up to ten thousand dollars in moving expenses.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second? Second by Terry, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Uh, staff's really excited to get Christopher on board, he is a pretty impressive individual as far as I've heard, and we're, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, any Evans? Mr. Chesak?
Um, I was just curious, does this mean that, uh, interim, uh, Public Utilities Director Wusso will be buying drinks when this is all settled?
Thank you.
We'll just assign him to another job.
Yeah, we'll give him another job. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, next up is, uh, resignation, we'll do this in, we'll do this in two parts, first one is to approve the resignation of Assistant City Engineer James Flotting, effective July tenth, twenty-twenty-four, an ISO move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, the next, we'll handle the next three all in one, the motion is to approve the updated Public Works Director and City Engineer job descriptions as presented, further, to approve the updated classification points for the Public Works Director position at eight hundred thirty-four points, and the City Engineer position at seven hundred twenty-four points, and finally, to authorize staff to begin advertising for the new positions, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, Chairman Johnson?
So this is a slight reorganization of the Public Works Department, instead of an Assistant City Engineer, we will have a City Engineer, and then we will still have a Public Works Director, but those points just got scaled down, so the wages will be a little bit lower on the Public Works Director, so we'll still, we'll have an engineer and a Public Works Director, instead of it being the same job, and the, the net cost out of the working funds is estimated to be about thirty-five hundred dollars, because the points that go up for the engineer are about the same as the points that go down for the, for the Public Works Director, I think Chris can handle any other questions.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries, please proceed.
Okay, update regarding the Brainerd Public Utilities Managers and Supervisors Association Union, uh, we received an update, Chris, do you want to update the full council?
Sure, we received notice from the Bureau of Mediation Services that the union has been certified, uh, the union will represent all managers supervisors in the Public Utilities Department who are supervisory employees within state law, and who are in public employees, um, by state law, it does exclude confidential employees, so at this point, um, the status quo order is lifted, and the union is certified.
Any questions of staff on this new unit? All right.
Yeah, when, when do you anticipate negotiations to begin? Any idea?
Typically, the union notifies the city when they want, uh, with the, it's called a notice of intent to negotiate, and so we're waiting for that notice.
Thank you. Thank you, any other questions of staff? Mr. Chair, no action, please proceed.
Okay, oh yeah, it's written right here, the next up is a budget workshop, and the motion is to set a budget workshop for Monday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at six P.M. in the council chambers, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, do we need to vote on this? Yeah, let's vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, next up, moment you've all been waiting for, here is our twenty-twenty-three annual TIF disclosure, information only. And finally, IBW Local Number Thirty-One Strike Arbitration Update, Chris?
Thank you, so on Friday, attorney Anne Gearing, she works for the Ratwick Law Firm, she is helping us with the arbitration situation, she contacted us on Friday and said that the union's attorney will be recommending to the union that we meet in mediation again, um, and at this point, the union's attorney wanted to talk to their client, we have not heard any more information, if the council wants more information than that, we should go into closed session to discuss it, but that is really all there is for an update at this point.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Chesak?
So if we went in the closed session, Chris, would it be about negotiation, uh, or is this about arbitration, can we, and then can we do that? Closed session?
It would be part of negotiations.
Okay.
Thank you, any other questions of staff? Okay, hearing none, I, Mr. Chair?
End of report.
Thank you very much, we are going to move on to item eight, unfinished business, item eight A is a call for applicants, we'll start with the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
All right, the filing applications are available on our website, Charter Commission, two terms expiring twenty-twenty-six, two terms expiring twenty-twenty-five, Park Board expire, one term expiring twenty-twenty-six, Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring twenty-twenty-six, we also have the Economic Development Authority, one term exp, expiring twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have, uh, two terms on the Parking Commission, one term to expire in twenty-twenty-six, and one expires in twenty-twenty-eight, uh, next up is eight B, this is the final reading of proposed ordinance one-five-seven-zero, amending city code one-two-zero-zero-point-zero-three subdivision six on temporary licenses, and that is, mm, mm, Connie, this is you?
Correct.
Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
So this ordinance is to amend, or this, uh, this ordinance is to amend our, uh, temporary licenses to Mass. State Statute to a maximum of twelve days of temporary liquor license in a calendar year, we need to conduct the final reading, hold the public hearing, and consider a motion to adopt the amended ordinance.
Thank you very much, any questions of staff on this ordinance?
Um, real quick.
Chesak?
Um, and, do we have to set a specific, uh, um, I mean, there is variations of how you can do this, right, and we, are we agreeing to, by this ordinance, are we agreeing to a specific pattern of how we're going to, uh, allocate these?
No, it can be any combination, twelve days per year, so it can be one twelve-day temporary liquor license, two six-day, three four-day, et cetera, just cannot exceed more than twelve days in a calendar year.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions of staff? Hearing none, the first order of business is to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance one-five-seven-zero, and dispense with the actual reading, uh, of the ordinance, which must be unanimous, is there a motion?
Johnson?
Motion by Johnson to hold the final reading, second by Chesak, any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion passes unanimously, it is eight-ten, and I will open the public hearing on proposed ordinance one-five-seven-zero, the liquor license, and I will ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forth, if you are online, star three will raise your hand and show us that you wish to speak, and then star six will unmute you, I'll ask a second time if there's anybody to, uh, wishes to speak, online or in chambers, and I will ask a final time. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance one-five-seven-zero.
So move.
Motion by Stunek, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline?
Good job.
Oh, thank you very much, any questions or comments on the ordinance? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that ordinance is adopted, next up is item eight C, this is the final reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance one-five-seven-one prohibiting camping in the city of Brainerd, we'll turn it over to staff first, and I think I'll start with Chief Davis, and then if, Mr. Kravik, if you have anything to add, Chief, can you tell us what we're doing here? Or why we're doing it?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I'll kind of give an explanation with maybe just a little bit of background in history, um, over the last several years, uh, within the city of Brainerd, we have seen an increase in homeless encampments, uh, our increase is kind of typical, I think, what we've been seeing nationwide for a multitude of different reasons, uh, primarily, our homeless encampment has been focused in a, in a wooded area down by the Evergreen Cemetery, uh, over the last couple of years, we have had some incidents down there that have been concerning from a, a public safety standpoint, in, up, up until this time, excuse me, um, well, I'll say, in, in June, we started to see, uh, some of these encampments, um, spread out throughout the city of Brainerd, and once again, there has been some incidents, uh, some concerns revolving around public safety through multiple areas, uh, within the city, that led to some discussions and some concerns, uh, from some individuals on the city council, uh, conversations I had with them revolved around public safety, and, um, concerns that if encampments continue to spread, um, what that could look like, a question, I guess that was asked of me was, wh, wh, what could the police chief do, what could the city of Brainerd do, if we started to see like a lot of other cities have seen, where maybe in, in a campment, um, takes over the majority of a park, or an encampment is established on the steps of city hall, within road right-of-ways, within the boulevard, and the answer to that question at that time is, there is nothing the police department can do, and there's really nothing the city of Brainerd can do, and that was from a lack of any lawful authority to prohibit camping, uh, w, within those places, uh, the only way to, uh, to regulate some of that for public safety purposes would be to enact an ordinance such as we're discussing here this evening, up until this point, um, I'm, I'm going to say that I am proud of the way the Brainerd Police Department has worked with the community so far, we've, we've been an active partner with the Crow Wing County Homeless Response Team, and multiple other private entities within the city, um, I'm proud to say, and, and I know for certain, we've taken a very empathetic, patient, deliberate approach to working with homeless individuals within the city, and, um, however, um, w, we're starting to see some of that maybe getting to the point where it's at the expense of public safety, and o, one thing that I know I need to remind myself at times is, my responsibility as a police chief is not to a single individual, um, as empathetic to them as I may be, my responsibility is to the entire community and public safety, and I'm, I'm fearful that if, if this continues without this ordinance, there are going to be occasions that the health, welfare, and safety of the community could very well be, be jeopardized with no enforcement tools, if you will, um, if this ordinance is enacted this evening, um, the Brainerd Police Department will double down our collaborative efforts to work with the Homeless Response Team and some of these entities, um, just as we have been, however, um, not at the expense of public safety, and we will enforce this ordinance when, when the situation arises. And one other thing I'd like to mention, um, discussions I've had over the last couple of weeks, um, there's been some question about the, the fine amount, and you'll see in the ordinance that it says, um, misdemeanor up to ninety days in jail or a thousand dollar fine, and I, I just want to explain that that is Minnesota statutory limits, um, on a misdemeanor, and by no means would that be what someone would be looking at for a penalty if they were issued a ticket, I've been speaking with, uh, the city prosecutor from Brainerd, and procedurally, how this works is if this, um, ordinance is adopted, the city prosecutor will submit to the courts, uh, paperwork that gives the ability for the ordinance to be enforced in a, a citation to be able to be written, um, what he is proposing to the courts is the default fine amount, which would be payable, you wouldn't have to appear in court, you could simply just go in and pay a ticket for the default amount of a fifty dollar fine, and then it's eighty-five dollars in court surcharges for a total of a hundred and thirty-five dollars, so, I, I think a lot of times we would be able to enforce this ordinance without issuing citations, and for there to be a penalty, but in the event that there was a citation, citation issued, you'd be looking at a hundred and thirty-five dollar total fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kravik, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, just wanted to give a, a quick summary of what's in the proposed ordinance, um, so, uh, part of that is no person shall camp in or upon any public property in the city except in any location where camping has been expressly allowed by the officer or agency having the control, management, and supervision of the public property in question, also, no, no person shall camp upon any private property in the city without the express written consent of the property owner or the owner's agent, and only in such locations where camping may be conducted in accordance with any other applicable city law, also, any violation of this section is deemed a misdemeanor, lastly, recognizing that enforcement resources are insufficient to cover, cover all included spaces at all times, prioritization will be given to certain spaces listed in the ordinance. With that, I can answer any questions, um, staff is recommending to hold the public hearing first for proposed ordinance fifteen-seventy-one, conduct the final reading, and dispense with the actual reading, and approve proposed ordinance fifty-seven, uh, fifteen-seventy-one and ordinance pertaining to prohibiting camping in the city of Brainerd.
Thanks, Mr. Kravik, so now we have an opportunity, any questions of staff? Mr. Chesak?
Thank you, Mr. Bevins, um, Mr. Kravik, I didn't hear you not mention one time anything about somebody being homeless in that ordinance, and that, what you just said, it was, uh, no person, it says, right?
It's, that's correct.
Okay, so nowhere in there does it say, this is only for homeless people, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so then may I ask a chief of, uh, police, any question?
Absolutely.
So Chief, if I decided to get together with, uh, council member Stunek, and maybe we bring the mayor with, and we go pitch a tent in Gregory Park, can you tell us to move right now, the way it is?
No.
Okay. Um, now if we decide to go down there with a case of, uh, fireball and get intoxicated, that's different, right?
Correct.
Public, uh, intoxication is not allowed, right?
Yes, there are activities within the park that are specific, and there are other ordinance that could address, whether it's disorderly behavior, alcohol use, or whatnot, but, um, yeah, not simply camping.
But, but literally, if, uh, you know, whoever decided to go pitch a tent in Gregory Park, whether they're homeless or not, there's really nothing the law enforcement in Brainerd, Minnesota could do to have them leave on any specific time, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, uh, Mr. Kravik, you want to suggest we hold the public hearing first?
That's correct.
All right, then, it is eight-nineteen, I will open the public hearing, if you've got something you'd like to say about the ordinance, please try and stay off of homelessness in general, because that's a big topic, but about the ordinance, we, we'll give you like two to three minutes, if, you know, I mean, we'll try and let everybody speak, but if you start to get repetitive, then, then, you know, we then, you know, we get it. Please state your name and address, and if you're, and we don't have anybody online, so I guess that's a moot point. But please, it is 8:20. I will ask you to come up, and you can form lines if you need to, and tell us what you've got to say about this ordinance. Thank you, in your name and address.
Hi, Bridget Walters, 1103 Quint Street. I've been a resident of Brainerd for 15 years, and I'm here to advocate for the unhoused. Having nowhere to go is not a crime, and it should not result in fines or jail time when no other crime has been committed, such as the tools police have right now for trespassing, disorderly conduct, fires outside legal allowance. These people are simply trying to exist. For context, I live on Quint Street, three blocks from the soup kitchen. While many people feel like not in my backyard, I have no desire to push these people farther from their resources. When I learned Brainerd City Council was looking to mirror Rochester's recent ordinance concerning homeless camps, I did what any millennial would do, and I Googled how to start a petition. I believed that our community would rather take care of each other and opt to build resources instead of criminalizing homelessness, and in the last month, I have seen us do just that. In 29 days, I was able to collect 527 signatures opposing such an ordinance. The petition reads as such. "Brainerd City Council is set to discuss passing an ordinance mirroring ordinance number 4528 of the city of Rochester. This ordinance allows unhoused individuals to be fined or jailed simply for being homeless when no other crime has been committed. Brainerd does not have a year-round homeless shelter. Such an ordinance should not be proposed without a year-round shelter." Of these signatures, 314 came from Brainerd residents, and 392 came from Crow Wing County residents. "Today, I ask that you postpone your vote on passing this ordinance and remain open to changes of its contents, especially given the recent funding of the overnight shelter." The Rochester ordinance included a clause stating if shelters were full, no fine or arrest may be made. I believe such clauses are important and a good compromise that everyone can live with. In response to the camping overnight in parks, other towns such as San Diego have made changes to close the park from 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM, simply to prevent camping in parks. There are other solutions than these fines and jail time. I look forward to being involved as we work forward to find members of our, to find a solution for the members of our community facing homelessness, because that is exactly what they are, members of our community. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. I'm going to go over here, and then you'll be next. Please state your name and address, and if you can keep it to under three minutes, that'd be great.
Thank you. Ed Shaw, 521 North Ninth Street. And I wanted to point out, expand on something the chief had mentioned, and I should say I'm an attorney by occupation, but I'm here not representing anybody, I'm speaking for myself. What we're talking about is a criminal offense. A misdemeanor is a crime. Now, the chief is correct, generally, you don't go to jail in a misdemeanor, but that is possible, and some people do. And even if someone doesn't go to jail, probation is generally in the picture. There's a lot of expense involved in that. You run a case through the court system, that's thousands of dollars of public money per case, even a misdemeanor case, even a minor case, on average. Having a conviction for a misdemeanor, even if it's a payable fine, you mail it in, that's a criminal conviction. You have to check the box, I have been convicted of a crime, if somebody asks you. So that is very serious, and that's what taking people, you're not sleeping in a park or in the woods if you're doing well. You're at the edge of society, you're doing very badly, and you're making it even more difficult to get a job, to get housing. Oh, you're a criminal, you've been convicted of a crime, you're at the bottom of the list. So we're just, we're perpetuating the problem. Right now, there isn't a shelter for them to go, so, and we're making it more difficult for them to get some kind of assisted housing or whatever, because now they've been convicted of a crime. Just because you don't go to jail, it does not mean you have not been convicted of a crime. Misdemeanor is a crime. This is not a speeding ticket, this is not a parking ticket. I want to make sure you all understand that. And the last speaker spoke very well. Right now, we don't have a place for these people to go. They wouldn't be sleeping in the woods or under a bridge if they had a place to go. Let's wait till we have a place for them to go. Otherwise, we are criminalizing homelessness, and I will say the word homelessness, that's what this is about, and we're criminalizing it. And that will not solve the problem, that will not make it go away, that'll create more problems. It will also have our officers, who are very busy as is, doing a lot of other things, protecting public safety, encountering desperate people, often mentally ill people. That's a recipe for a big problem. That's a recipe for a confrontation that can turn very badly. We've seen that in the media all over. We don't want Brainerd to be in the next headline with a confrontation concerning officers and someone who has serious mental health issues, who is literally up against the wall, has no other place to go. Please put the brakes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Scott Atkinson, 4203 Parkway Drive, Nisswa. I am representing, I am the founder of Lighthouse Beginnings at 8055 Industrial Park Road in Baxter. Just a little history about us, and then just our concerns. LHB opened up what's called Open Arms Community Center on December 11th of 2023. These are individuals that we started working with that are in trouble, let's just put it that way. In the past eight and a half months, we have supported over 4,000 visits, and we currently, we are currently working with 165 individuals deemed unhoused. They're living around the community, they truly are, cars, tents, doesn't matter, they're all over the place. Many of these people will be affected by this ordinance, and many more are halfway step, halfway step into that same ordinance, falling into it. So we work with a lot of people that are just in trouble in their lives. We have met with these individuals daily since December 11th to work on their situation until the shelter closed. And then they scattered, right, because there's no place for them to go. This proposed ordinance will just scatter them even further, so we are going to have a hard time diminishing our opportunity to work with those to create a better life for them. And just an FYI, out of the 165 individuals, we have 60 in housing and in beds in eight and a half months. I just want to give you a little information on it, on what we're working with, I'm going to give you just two points. Mental health diagnosis, 81% of the people we're working with have a mental health diagnosis, and 46% of those have substance use diagnosis. Now, that's over 100%, right, because a lot of them have dual diagnosis. And one starts with a lot of times, mental health, and then it goes to substance, and sometimes vice versa. The other stat I'd like to give you is that the largest participation with us are ages 41 to 55, and the growing population is 55 and over for homelessness. That's the new population starting right now, because people can't afford to stay in their homes anymore. So from an article published online by Rochester's KROC 134 AM, "The city of Rochester took one year before voting on their camping ban," what they call camping ban. In this publication, it was stated that they knew it was not a solution, but most of the campers were, and most of the campers were unsheltered. So they said it's not a finalization for them to finish what they're doing. It wasn't an end to a means, it's just a beginning to an end. I hope that you all agree with me that the ordinance is not a solution that would eliminate any type of camping or public property use, especially with the services that they need are here available in Brainerd, and they have to come here for them. I applaud you for supporting the Brainerd Police Department. We support the Brainerd Police Department. We love working with them. They are compassionate, for sure. But without alternatives, even for the police department, such as housing vouchers or whatever it is, I have to question the viability of the ordinance. The warming shelter opens on September 22nd. At this time, you will see a dramatic decrease in camping in public property. This I know, because you didn't see it all winter, right, or in spring, early spring. I can also tell you this, that we conducted a survey in July of our attendees, and we asked them, if you could have a shelter year-round, would you stay in the shelter? Everyone said 100%, absolutely, they would. We believe them, we work with them daily. So regardless of your vote, I ask that maybe you embrace the situation with us, and look at the unhoused and consider an ad hoc committee. I know it's a scary thing to ask for another committee for a city, you're busy, I will do that.
Yep, you're taking somebody else's time.
With city's participation to review and develop solutions that offer alternative experiences for the public safety and individuals of these people. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come forward, state your name and address. Try and keep it under three minutes.
Three minutes, well do. Tad Johnson, 218 Ridge Drive. I'm a resident of the city of Brainerd, I'm a business owner in the city of Brainerd, and have a couple of commercial properties as well. And, you know, as this debate's been ongoing, I've been hearing the word compassion a lot, and I think compassion can be viewed in different ways. I think to be compassionate to someone, you have to will the good of another person. And to allow people to live in unsanitary conditions is not compassionate. Like, am I a compassionate father if I let my four-year-old play in the street, knowing they can get hit by a car, knowing it's dangerous? No, I'm compassionate by, you know, telling them, hey, stay out of the streets, or you're going to get in more trouble. Like, to be compassionate, tell them, there's just better way, you don't, the amount of, you know, sickness and illness, and we need to look out for the, you know, the most vulnerable members of our society the most, like, that's our duty as citizens. So to be compassionate is to, is to crack down on unsanitary living conditions, and, you know, follow the same rules as everyone else. And then we've tried the current policy for years, and the problem's only getting worse, so that in itself kind of says it's probably time to try something different. So I am, I'm in support of you guys, it's a tough decision, but know that it is compassionate to set boundaries for your citizens. It is, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come on up, state your name and your address, and give us the two-minute and 45-second version.
Bill Weir, 5823 Laverne Circle Baxter. I am here not only as a concerned citizen, but also the operation manager for the Bridge on Seventh Warming Shelter. This ordinance is, I do agree, something does need to be done on a city level, but the way the ordinance written, I do not believe is the way to go. There are certain limitations that this ordinance does put on my organization. For such, our shelter is not open all year round. Our shelter is only open seasonal from September to April, and in our permit, it specifically states that we are only to operate September through April. So if this ordinance were to pass, we would need to reply for a new permit, and in order to be open all year rounds. We've also seen the shelter being utilized since we've opened in 2021. Last year, in our third year of operation, in January, February, there were several nights where we had to turn away people because we were at max capacity. With this ordinance passing, it is possible that we may see that trend continue and possibly be even getting worse. Another thing that this ordinance could do is push our unhoused population into our smaller communities, such as Nisswa, Pequot Lakes, Little Falls, Pine River, communities that do not have the resources to deal with this. And being that Brainerd is the county seat, this is where people need to come to get resources. We are afraid that those people are going to fall through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Please come on up. You guys are doing great, thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Justin Alexander, I live at 1341 Acorn Drive Southwest. I am an attorney in the area, just like Ed. I've read the city prosecutor's memorandum regarding this issue. I don't think it's correct. I think there's a misunderstanding of what happened with the Grants Pass case. It's going to be remanded to the Ninth Circuit, and they still have to decide whether or not it's constitutional under the excessive fines clause of the Eighth Amendment. This was a very narrow decision. It wasn't based on something big, it's very narrowly written. Additionally, it may violate due process as well, as well, the Minnesota Constitution does not mirror the federal constitution. It's cruel or unusual punishment. And there's also going to be challenges to this ordinance regarding the right to travel, because it's going to impede the homeless's rights to travel as well. And to me, reading the ordinance, it's no different than banishing someone. That's what you're going to be doing by passing it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Come on up, please state your name and address.
Emma Crust, 133 Kelly Ray Road in Brainerd. I wanted to touch base on lived experience. I'm sharing my lived experience tonight with being unhoused in hopes to bring clarity to stigmas and shed light on barriers. My last time being unhoused, I did have a job, and I did not struggle with addiction. I lived paycheck to paycheck, and I experienced a major expense that landed myself into an eviction because I just couldn't keep up. Being the fact I had already utilized most programs to become stabilized at this point in my life, my options were now very limited for additional support. To maintain access to any remaining programs, various applications in process, and continued current services, I had to stay in the local Brainerd area. To keep myself safe, to avoid exposure, and reduce my risk of becoming an addict, couch hopping was not a feasible option. I come from a middle-class family with very traditional values, meaning, and this is all pun intended, I made my bed and I must lie in it. This is how I came to live in an encampment. While I saved up, I needed to for a down payment, and I searched for a landlord that would be willing to rent to me after an eviction. During this four-month stay, I did what I could to survive while fighting tirelessly to gain momentum, but the quote-unquote "help" that was offered was only Band-Aids for very short-term relief, and the programs that did offer support for my long-term goals took effort, time, and energy that was in limited supply. Most of my program, most of the programs I was involved with were a slow process, and disability relief took years. Many programs I no longer qualified for. My job got switched back to a day-to-day temp position that needed, didn't meet most income guidelines, and documents would expire and need to be updated frequently, and for every new application for a rental, it cost me more fees. These are only a few examples of many barriers I faced. In time, I was able to secure an apartment, and eventually, I was able to buy myself a trailer home after securing disability. This provided me the opportunity to stabilize beyond surviving to finish college, to become a licensed social worker. I chose this path to help change and support my community by helping reduce barriers, and to prove with my lived experiences that not all stigmas are true, and that there is hope. This ordinance doesn't align with reducing barriers or uplifting our unhoused community members, and I am asking you that you consider this proposal more time and to reevaluate the criminalization of camping.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up. Anybody else? Please come on up. We'll let you go too, Vicky. All right, so if you can keep it under three minutes, that leaves more room for others to speak. Please state your name and address, thanks for coming up.
My name is Randy Wickham, I live at 710 South Eighth in Brainerd. You asked not to bring homelessness into this, and I can respect that. I'm not here to demonize the city council or to invalidate the community's genuine concerns. I am asking that you guys take a step back and reevaluate this ordinance. It's going to put a lot of barriers and a lot of problems for people that are most vulnerable. I speak from lived experience, and if this would had been one more, one more barrier, I would not be standing where I am today. Yeah, I, I'm so nervous, sorry. I'm just asking that the council take a step back and take a chance to work with some of our leaders of our support services, and see what we can do besides the criminalization, because I don't think this is going to solve any problems. I think it's going to bring a lot more pain and a lot more suffering to our community and to our vulnerable population. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Vicky Kinney from Mont Road in Lake Shore, we have about nine acres of property in Brainerd with my neighbor Talav Coalition. So there's some aspects of this ordinance I think that most of us could agree on. So like, no camping in city parks, no camping along the roads or sidewalks, no camping in front of government buildings. And I think that there should be some enforcement, especially if people are leaving trash or garbage, that should be enforced. And I think our law officers should be able to enforce at least those minimum, you know, rules as far as parks and all that kind of thing. So I agree with that, I don't agree with high fines, I don't agree with criminalizing, you know, that's probably where I have a big problem. I also don't like the rest of the part of the ordinance, I'm going to probably read it, because if I've got three minutes, I'm going to just go rambling.
Minute and a half.
Three, okay, I'll talk fast, okay. The remaining aspects of the ordinance are unreasonable if there are no other options for the unhoused, because where are they supposed to go, you know, literally? And there's no data to support that. And there's no data to support that criminalization is actually a benefit. Yet, there's a lot of data to support other types of solutions. And so I think that's where we should be looking. This, this is a big issue, and I know you don't want to talk about homelessness, but it's not going away. In fact, it's gonna get bigger and it's gonna become more of a problem. My Neighbor to Love Coalition right now has thirty-two households on our, like, contact list. So we're not taking applications yet, but they just wanna, you know, when you do take applications, take our name and number. You know, of those, um, one-third of them are families with kids. And of course, there is no family shelter at all in Brainerd. The shelter that we have seasonally is just for adults only. And where are they supposed to go? We really do not have the right kinds of resources or enough resources. People do seek out help for housing. They get on lists and sometimes wait, sometimes six months, sometimes longer, and some never will qualify. And they can start giving up hope and then some just stop trying. I believe that we can come together and find solutions. I mean, there's enough in this, this room alone that's smart enough. If we really, really got together and we could figure this out and we could do a much better job. I think we need to create a path for more housing options that are affordable to everyone. Get people into housing, get people stabilized, get them into the workforce. It will make this community stronger and healthier. That is gonna take some time and that's what I'm asking for. That this council passes a minimized version of this ordinance. You know, protect the parks, the roads, the, the government building, all that's fine, but hold off on the rest of it. You know, you can always change an ordinance later, but let's just not start with such a big leap. It would give us some time to formulate a plan. There's already people, clergy members, churchgoers, we've got concerned citizen service providers that have already been meeting, trying to brainstorm, coming up with ideas of some better solutions. And we need some time for that. We can't just kind of, you know, like, do this in this first night and in three minutes. So we'd like some time for that. And to realize, this problem isn't for somebody else to fix. It's not like, you know, you guys take care of it. This is everybody's problem and you guys are city leaders. And so it's on you too. It's for all of us to work together and work on this. In the interim, we need a temporary fix. And that means looking at some of our rules that we already have. Such as, if somebody is camping out, keeping their space clean and neat, no garbage or waste, and they're on public property, can we just now just leave them alone? What is the problem? Or if, let's say, a church or a business wants somebody to, um, park their car, if there's a family that needs a place to sleep and they have no place to go. Park in their parking lot in the night, for now. Have that not be illegal. Or if there's somebody that says, I'd be happy to open up my backyard in my driveway for somebody who's unhoused. They can pitch a tent in the nighttime. Let that be allowed for now. I don't see why that's, um, should be prevented. I think there's a lot of people that would like to work together and find temporary solutions until we can get this resolved. So I guess that's the main thing. Again, I don't want people pushed further into the woods where we can't help them or we can't reach them. Just because you can't see them, doesn't mean they're not there. So I would like to work on long-term solutions. I would like our community to band together and come up with something that's really gonna work in the long term. Let's start fresh and, and make Brainerd be a little bit better, a more unified and stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Isabel Johnson and I live at two one eight Ridge Drive in Brainerd. I would like to speak from the perspective of a young teenage girl. So, and I would also like to highlight that the reason Chief Davis is proposing this ordinance is primarily the concern for public safety. I, as a public citizen, have had to walk past the library to get to school. There are homeless encampments at the library. And I, as a young teenage girl, feel fear. And I should not have to feel that. That is a concern of public safety. My dad is a business owner in Brainerd and he has homeless people living in his little courtyard. My younger sister will go to his office and she works there because she cleans and she cleans on the weekends when nobody is there and she feels fear because there are just homeless people sitting there. And so I would like to just reiterate that this concern is for public safety and for young teenage girls like my sister and myself, that there is a better solution. And it also does not prohibit camping on private property. So if you would like, I'm speaking to the city of, just the citizens of Brainerd, if you would like to open your backyards to these people to camp in, please, please do so they have a place to stay. But in public places where young teenage girls are walking, I feel like it's just a public safety concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will ask for a second call. Okay? Please state your name and address and give us the two-and-a-half-minute version.
I'll do my best. Preaching in two-and-a-half minutes. I'm Reverend Leslie Moody and I reside at four eleven Juniper Street in Brainerd. I'm the senior pastor at First Congregational United Church of Christ and as such, I have witnessed firsthand the struggles faced by individuals in our community. Our church is located at the corner of Juniper and Fifth and we've been there since eighteen seventy-two. We've long been a place where people seek help, not just for spiritual guidance, but also for basic needs like food and shelter. Due to our location, we are often one of the first places people turn when experiencing a crisis. Sadly, in the nine years that I've been here, uh, resources for those in need have gone through many changes, but one thing has remained true and that is that there are a lot of people living here who struggle to make ends meet in a city with insufficient resources when they are faced with a crisis. And I want to dispel an all-too-frequent myth that very, very few people sleep outside in, when they are unhoused or in their cars because they want to. They do it because they are out of options. When I began as my ministry here, I was dismayed to discover how limited the resources are for people who are unhoused. This became painfully clear to me when a twenty-two-year-old Army veteran walked through our doors seeking a place to stay only for a few nights. He had secured housing in Pine River but needed a temporary place to stay until his move-in date. After making call after call after call to organizations in Brainerd and beyond as far as St. Cloud, it became clear that he had no viable options. This is a reality that remains unchanged when the Bridge on Seventh Shelter is closed for the season. And while there have been some improvements to resources here for the unhoused residents of Brainerd, challenges persist. As we've had been mentioned, the Bridge on Seventh has limited capacity and funding and it is not equipped to accommodate families. So imagine being a family faced with homelessness and camping in your car is now illegal. Where are they supposed to go? Salvation Army does offer hotel stays for a night or two, if, if their funding is adequate. But tell me how many people can find sufficient housing in a night or two? Putting them back on the street then, when their hotel time is over. This ordinance, friends, does not just impact encampments. And I know how fear can drive us to make hasty decisions. We see encampments in places like Minneapolis and Seattle and San Francisco and we don't want that to happen here. But it affects individuals and families struggling to find safe temporary shelter, including sleeping in their cars or sleeping under bridges or sleeping in the woods. Encampments, friends, are a visible symptom of deeper issues. Issues like insufficient support services, especially for mental health and substance use, a severe lack of affordable housing and an absence of a year-round emergency shelter or transitional housing. Addressing these root causes is crucial. And this ordinance, as it is currently written, not only fails to address the causes of homelessness, but studies from the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty show that criminalization actually increases homelessness by fifteen percent. Supportive housing decreases homelessness by forty percent. The solution, my friends, is not to criminalize the symptoms, but to address the causes. There are policy, policy solutions that are more effective and frankly, more humane than making sleeping on public land a criminal offense. Faith communities and nonprofit, nonprofit leaders are working together toward these solutions, but we need your help. So I urge the members of this council, my fellow humans, to delay the vote on this ordinance. Take some time to consult with organizations and individuals who are doing the work with our fellow residents of this city. Learn about the true impact that this ordinance will have on some of the most vulnerable people who live and work here, who have children who attend school here. And let's find some real solutions that will make all of us proud to call Brainerd home. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Anybody else? Come on forth. State your name and address.
My name is Emma Needham. My address is one zero one seven Thirteenth Avenue Northeast. I'm here to talk about ordinance fifteen seventy-one. And I'm here because my uncle, Richard Needham, was unhoused at the time of his death when he froze to death in Bemidji, Minnesota, behind a liquor store. Police had been dispatched to the scene to determine his safety and officers left before they verified whether or not he was safe. To be clear, I don't blame the officers for what happened to my uncle. My uncle was in a bad position and was suffering from substance use disorder. And he had burned his bridges even with our families here in Brainerd and other places within the state. But I do have concerns as a city resident for the same things happening here when we have ordinances such as these where the only people that show up are police officers. Our police officers are well-documented, as overburdened and possibly undertrained in these areas. The city of Minnesota has no financial indications within this ordinance that indicate who's going to pay for the police officers who are supposed to verify whether or not unhoused individuals have access to services that are available to them. And I wanted to take a minute to go down to the county offices here in Brainerd. This is the applications that I was given at the county offices in Brainerd. This is a hundred and thirty-six pages. It contains the application for emergency assistance, medical assistance and disability. It does not contain other resources that our unhoused community might need, including veterans' benefits, those running from domestic or sexual assault situations, unhoused youth, families, those suffering from addiction or those in need of legal and job training. The amount that we are asking our officers to take on with this ordinance is not feasible without additional funding. At the risk of repeating what Mr. Ed Shaw said or what Ms. Emma Crust said, these situations and these types of barriers and costs are not what residents in Minnesota, in Brainerd, Minnesota, want to see for our unhoused community. And I ask this council to take some time and talk with the dozens of organizations that already exist here in Brainerd that are doing this work and counsel with them to ask what the other solutions are that would not cost taxpayers like myself money in incarceration and police fees. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming up. Anybody else? I will ask a second time. Come on up, because the next one will be the third time and then we're done.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Callie Schwinniger. Uh, my address is three oh one Third Street, Little Falls, Minnesota. I, um, I am a house manager, one of two, at Agape Manor for Lighthouse Beginnings. Okay. Um, where am I at? I have been a house manager for Lighthouse, uh, for about a year. During my time here, I have seen a minimum of ten women come to our house from the Crow Wing County area due to the lack of assistance in housing here. I have learned through the ladies here that I, that, um, that I mentor, that they want to better their lives and many of them were never taught how to live a healthy and fruitful life. Therefore, most of them haven't even witnessed what that looks like. One of my ladies came to me the other night crying about this exact issue, issue. She said to me, she is someday, that some days it is really hard for her at Agape because when she doesn't know how to live a good life, it becomes overwhelming and she feels like she gets lost. I had to remind her, she is still at Agape after a month and she is not where she used to be. Which leads me to my next point. Once, one, uh, which leads me to my next point. Once these women are placed into Agape or into housing, it is a process of adjustment and consistency. I have seen women come to Agape who majority of their time was spent outside, whether it was raining or late at night. Women who didn't want to store their food in the main areas and ladies who thought that their clothes and personal belongings would be stolen from their rooms. So they stored them elsewhere. This does not mean they are not ready to change, nor doesn't mean they are not trying to change. These are just simply symptoms of their past. Sometimes these women who want the most, uh, wanted the most are the women who have the worst of these symptoms and vice versa. These women are in survival mode. I know all this from personal experience as well. One of my women who has been at the Agape, been at Agape now for three months, she came in, when she came in, she had major mental health and health issues. She also had a rough time warming up to people. She now has a job that is giving back to the unhoused, working on her mental health and has, or is solving her major health problems. We are a faith-based, faith-based house. With that, she is now walking closely with the Lord. Another woman, um, we couldn't even have like a regular conversation with her for more than like a minute and a half without her becoming defensive. She now is very receptive and is volunteering in the community. This all takes time, but they do start to become more comfortable in the home and in the community. She, it has been an amazing thing to see the progress in all the women that come into the home and, uh, to watch the way the girls hold each other up. And a blessing to be in the position that I am in to be able to help guide them into a better life. It takes a lot of guidance, patience and encouragement and compassion from us mentors. One-on-ones when things are becoming overwhelming and frustrating, frustrating. Meetings with our in-house peer support specialists who help them with, uh, resources and a community of women who know a little bit about what it's like to go through what they went through. Please put a pause on the ordinance. I know that the fear is a, that is a logical thing and that I understand that from my personal experience. I can relate to that. But I do ask for a pause because I've been on a committee and we have been talking about solutions that further on the ordinance. I do agree with an ordinance as well. But put a pause that we could, um, talk further on further solutions. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Please state your name and address.
My name is Tasha Harris Pickar. I have an address at Adel for Southeast Nineteenth Street, Brainerd, Minnesota, five six four zero one. I had a whole long list of things to say to you tonight. Everybody else has pretty much covered it. I just want to say that Brainerd has been my home for twenty-one years. This is my town. You are my people. They are my people. He is my people. And John, I never thought I would say that. I really didn't. Mascot it, people at Open Arms, those are my people. This is my community and I love it, okay? I've tried to move away twice and I always come back. I'm standing here as a representative of this whole situation, both in an occupational manner and in a lived experience manner, okay? So I've been, I have been unhoused multiple times in my life. I also suffer from mental health issues. Mental health issues were the reason I became unhoused. Maybe my mental health issues and being unhoused led to substance use disorder. Without all of the collaboration and all of the resources and a whole huge team of people, I wouldn't be standing here today about to talk to you about my occupational, um, views. Today, um, at my, I work for, I work for an organization, organization that does, that takes care of people that are homeless, that suffer from substance use disorder and mental health issues in your community. And today I did an intake for a man who is in his sixties. He has a horrible traumatic brain injury and he does not know where he's gonna sleep tonight. When I looked outside of work today, it was absolutely pouring rain. And this man can barely complete a sentence. He doesn't have a whole lot of memory and it takes him a long time for memory recall. I sat down with him today to do a MinSure application, to do a food stamps benefit application. And I asked him, where do you stay at night? And he said, sometimes I can find a tent, sometimes I stay in the woods. One, two days out of the year, I can stay on my brother's couch. He has a brother here in Brainerd, Thanksgiving and Christmas. On the July first meeting, Councilman Beavins, I heard you make a comment that surely these people have couches they can sleep on. And I assure you, sir, that is not the case. They don't all have couches they can sleep on. This man has a brother that lives in the same town. He's allowed to sleep on that couch twice a year. The unhoused situation is a situation, I understand, that is of mass, mass complexity. It is just huge and you guys aren't able to address all of that. You guys are here to address public safety. As you understand, in the public safety issue, like, the, the community doesn't feel safe, okay? Neither do these people. Their brains don't process correctly. If you look it up online or you look up YouTube, there's cute little videos about how neural pathways rewire themselves when you're running on, um, when you're running in safety mode and self-preservation mode. Your brain doesn't process right, it doesn't communicate right and it doesn't start to work right until you get to safety, until you get to a place where you feel safe, until you're comfortable. So with that being said, you cannot get ahead in life, you cannot make positive changes in life, you cannot get resources, you can't even function to get help until you get to safety. So there has to be another alternative. And one thing I know about this community and the reason that I love it so much is this community works together. You're all on opposite sides, you all have opposite things that you need to protect and you have financial barriers that you need to, like, take into consideration and I understand that. But everybody here cares. And I'm asking you guys to just slow down. But everybody here cares, and I'm asking you guys to just slow down. Officer Davis, you said that there's going to be only like a $135 fine to this issue. That is not what that ordinance says. So if there's only going to be a $135 fine and no jail time, make that ordinance say that. Slow down. That ordinance says they can be prosecuted for 90 days in jail, $1,000 fine, and that's not going to help anybody. Our social rep program at our jail has come a long, long, long ways, thank God, but it's not set up for this. It doesn't have the resources for this. But if you guys collaborate with community organizations, that does. Or if you give the community organizations some time to collaborate with each other, that does. Probation does not have the resources to deal with a caseload that big. I'm just saying, like, the financial expedition on this is just going to be huge, and expenditures are going to be huge. This isn't the answer. Collaboration is, and that's what this community is created at. This community is beautiful, and I thank you guys for helping keep it beautiful. It's my home, and I just want you to slow down on this. It affects a lot of people.
All right. It's 9:00. I don't want to prohibit anybody from speaking. If they've got something, they gotta say, "This is the time for that." I'll ask a third and final time. Can we take you as the last one, or come on up and give us your name and address?
Howdy. Michael Giovannis, I'm from Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm not from Brainerd, I'd like to say that off the bat. So your community members know best, I don't know best, but I study this kind of stuff, policy specifically around camping ordinances and this kind of stuff. I think this ordinance is language that was copied pretty much exactly from Rochester, so it is very illogical for your city to implement this language as it's currently proposed. It's going to cost your city a lot, as previously stated, and you'll also definitely face lawsuits, which I already see as an expenditure for you guys. So more lawsuits and a cost burden, not a good idea from that perspective. And then in terms of, like, actual policy procedures, I think there's better policy that you can implement and copy from other cities. Somebody previously mentioned, like, closing city parks at a specific time. That's like a lot easier policy lift for you guys, so that would actually work. And then the, somebody mentioned $135. Like, what's really cool about local government is you guys get to make it up, like the laws, to some degree, you know, to some degree. But, so, I agree that if you decide for your local community that criminalization doesn't make sense, which I frankly don't think it does from a professional standpoint, you can create your own solution. You don't have to copy and paste from Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make this the last call. Anybody just can't stand it? Gotta get it off your chest? Thank you. I will close the public hearing at 9:03, and thank you all for doing a fantastic job coming forth and speaking. So what happens next is we're going to take a vote on the second reading of Proposed Ordinance 1571. Now, if, if we vote for this, it just means we're voting on the reading and dispensing with the actual reading. If this doesn't pass unanimously, that doesn't mean the ordinance doesn't pass. It just means then we have to read the whole thing, okay? So, that's the next step, and we will look for a motion.
So move.
To, thank you, Mr. O'Day, to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1571 and dispense with the actual reading. A vote to dispense with the actual reading must be unanimous, okay? We've got a motion by O'Day.
Second.
A second by Stingline. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign? That motion passes unanimously, so now we don't have to read the thing. The item number three is to approve the Proposed Ordinance 1571, an ordinance pertaining to prohibiting camping in the city of Brainerd. Is there a move?
So move, Johnson.
Motion to approve, Johnson, second by O'Day. Any discussion on the ordinance? If any, Stingline.
I would like to make a subsidiary motion, Kelly, just warning you.
Sure.
I would like to move to amend the fine down to $200 and the jail, the maximum fine to $200 and the maximum jail time to 15 days.
Okay. We've got a motion to amend, a maximum fine of $200, and a maximum jail stay of 15 days. Is there a motion to?
I'll second that for a discussion, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Stingline, a second by Chesek, and this is a motion to amend that changes the maximum fine to $200 and the maximum jail stay to 15 days. So we're going to discuss that amendment right now. We'll go Mr. Johnson and then Carrot Terry.
Kelly, I think I, as the maker of?
I made the original motion, and you jumped in line.
Okay. I apologize.
Do you feel you have a legal right to go first?
On the amendment, yes.
All right. We're going to go with Stingline, Johnson, and Terry. I won't, I won't, I won't dispute it.
So, as the maker of the amendment, I didn't just, you know, pull the $200 out of thin air. That is the number that Duluth settled on. I did mention last time, I don't want to be at the front of the pack on this. I really want to be kind of in the middle, and I think that following in Duluth's footsteps is probably where I think we should be.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I don't not support it, right? I can support it. I have one question for James or Joe. Is this change substantial enough that we would have to go back to a first reading? Or is this change small enough that we can do it after the second reading?
Yeah, Mr. President of Council, I don't, you know, there's no hard and fast rule on that. I don't think this is major enough, frankly, to go back to that whole process.
Thank you. Thank you. Carrot Terry?
Okay.
So just on the amendment now.
Well, so I'm not a big understander of your processes, Mr. President, and so I have comments on the whole ordinance.
Go get a chance.
Should I save them, then? Okay.
Just the 200 and the 15 days. Anything on that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, but.
On the amendment, Mr. Chesek.
Yes, I have a question. I think it'd be for the chief or our city attorney, and the chief had indicated the dollar amount and the 90 days was per state statute. So I want to know, are we allowed to do this, based on what we heard from the chief? And it seemed to me it had to be in there because of state statute, and I just need a verification of that.
Chief Davis, can you answer that? Or, or?
Yeah, I'll probably defer to Attorney Langle as far as, does the maximum penalties imposed for a misdemeanor under state statute have to be drafted and listed in this ordinance? I'm not so sure, but.
Attorney Langle?
I suppose the city can't have a more restrictive amount in there. I'm not sure how that's going to work out with the cost and so forth, and how that's going to play out, to be honest. I think that'd be more of a question for your prosecutor, but, yeah, I don't have anything further than that. I'm not sure.
Sorry, Jeff.
So, we're unclear if we can even do this based on what we're hearing. Would that, not, I understand that wording was in there based on the maximum allowed under state statute, so that's where I, I'm, I could, I could be fine with lowering the amounts, the time and the dollar amount. However, I just want to make sure that we're in order to do that.
Mr. Langle, if we approve this, can you come back if there's a problem?
Absolutely.
All right. There's a, there's a timeframe here.
Sure.
In acting on the ordinance. Mr. Mayor's next, and then Mr. Or, okay? Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, I think that we had this ordinance reviewed by our prosecutor, and we were given the information that we know that that part of it was approved as far as the legality. So I'm more comfortable passing it as is. We can always, as was mentioned earlier, come back and change things about an ordinance if something isn't working right. I don't think, I think the chief was pretty accurate in saying that these fines aren't going to go that high. I think we have a pretty fair judicial system in Crow Wing County, and things can even be forgiven a lot of the time, so that's not something I think is a sticking point of this. Having it in there as a state statute, I think, is probably the safer way to go as a city right now, but that's, that's where I feel more comfortable tonight.
Thank you. Anybody who has spoke on the amendment? So we have a motion and a second to amend, bringing the maximum fine to $200 and 15 days. Anybody mind if we call a roll? Tony? On the amendment only?
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
No.
Stunick?
No.
Terry?
No.
Stingline?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Sorry, Johnson. Johnson?
Motion fails. We are back to the original motion, which includes the, I apologize, 90 days in jail and $1,500 fine, $1,000 fine.
I made the motion. Can I talk, Mr. President?
Yep, you're up on the original motion.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate all the testimony we heard tonight, and I do think there is more we can do. I haven't really heard, weren't any concrete examples. It was all, there's more. And if you have something that we can do, I want you to bring it to the city. We can always amend this ordinance going in the future to make it better. We can pass other ordinances to make it better, but it needs to be concrete and black and white, not just ideas. So, bring it to us, but I support this amendment. I think doing the same thing and expecting different results isn't going to work. So this is something different. If this doesn't work, it'll take us a month to get rid of it or to change it. So I, I think we really do need to support this ordinance.
Thank you. Carrot Terry, you ask next?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you all for all of your testimony tonight. You're so very humbling and insightful, and I just appreciate all of your testimony, both for and against this proposed ordinance, so thank you for taking time. So I'm going to share my thoughts, both as an elected council member who advocates for all individuals in our city, and in my understanding and education related to the issue of homelessness. While we do have the beginning of a coordinated response to this issue, what we know is that all sectors must work together to build a systemic response to homelessness based on the solutions that we know work. Housing and services to end homelessness work. Tickets and arrests do not. Greg Colburn, the author of "Homelessness is a Housing Problem," who's quoted in a documentary recently that was, that has come out, said that fast-growing cities have dynamic economies where people want to live and work, and generally speaking, they have not built enough housing to accommodate the people who want to live there. Communities keep thinking that if we build luxury units, we're only going to get high-income people moving into our city, improving our tax base. But what they're really doing is taking the people who live there and squeezing them until they break. And when they break, that's homelessness. Homelessness impacts single individuals, those with mental health issues, those who are healthy, those who may have substance use issues, males and females, and families. We have many children who are homeless in our community, and data indicates if a child is unhoused for just two weeks, they can lose an entire year of educational progress. This isn't just a simple camping ordinance issue. I do understand the police have to have something in which to hold individuals accountable. I have the utmost respect for Chief Davis. You are doing a fantastic job in working with community partners, and I very much appreciate that, sir. However, there is zero evidence that ticketing someone who is homeless has a positive impact. As a matter of fact, it makes things worse for our entire legal system, including law enforcement and the courts, in terms of misdemeanor enforcement and tracking, and the ability of the ticketed and convicted individuals to obtain housing or jobs because of a criminal record. If there is criminal activity conducted by anyone, regardless of housing status, we need to hold them accountable. There is criminal behavior amongst all members of our community, and I understand that, and there are laws around mitigating those behaviors. In addition to helping our police, which I get we need to do, we also need to keep the individuals safe. That includes all members of the community. It also includes our homeless population. The homeless population often coalesces because of safety. There is safety in numbers, and they are finding that safety among each other. So how do we help them find community amongst those people who are housed? Evidence shows wraparound services help, as does supportive housing. My life's motto, you guys have heard me say it, you're probably sick of hearing me say it, but when I know better, I do better. And I think that applies to a lot of people. There are many people in our community who are not aware of the problem of homelessness in our area. You don't see the homeless on the streets like you do in warmer climates like California, for example, but they're here in our community, and it's their community too. So here's what I know. We are getting better. We have a warming shelter that's open in the colder months, so let's look at what it would take to have it open year-round, so individuals have a place to sleep safely. Our community partners, like you who spoke tonight regarding Open Arms, have a place for folks to go to during the day. They provide the wraparound services and have gotten 60 individuals housed. Thank you for that information, Scott. So what's the solution? Well, first I would ask that we postpone this ordinance until we get closer to the warming shelter potentially opening all year-round, but postpone it for now until we get closer to the opening in September. This will allow our community partners to work on additional resources and the provision of coordinated services that I've mentioned. If we do not do that, I suggest rather than a misdemeanor citation, we look at an administrative citation. So let me just read quick from our own City of Brainerd website on administrative citations. The Brainerd City Council has passed Ordinance 1524, changing Section 320 of the City Code titled Administrative Citations. This process has been implemented as an alternative to the criminal court system for violations of an administrative nature, since the system is overloaded and citizens will avoid being labeled as a criminal. A violation of the City Code is a misdemeanor, and the administrative citation program will create an efficient and effective enforcement method in lieu of filing criminal charges. It seems that we do adopt the idea of not criminalizing some things in our city, and I would propose we do the same for this issue of homelessness until we can provide evidence-based solutions we know that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. Chair? Mr. O'Day?
I think that this, this whole issue, if this goes through, the way I see our police department, the way they operate, nothing is supposed to change with the way that our police department operates. Their, their policy in dealing with this type of situation, nothing has changed there. All of the other options have to be thrown on the table. I don't think that this is going to turn into something where the system gets overloaded right away. We just don't have that amount of population that's going to make that happen right now. And it's a, it's a, it's basically the last option for our police department to enforce this. So I don't think that what we're talking about here becoming such a huge issue is going to happen. Give it a year. Let's see how this works. Maybe we can revisit it next year. There's, there's plenty of other things in, in play right now as far as the services that are offered here. This is going to give us a pretty good picture of what shortcomings we have if it does work the way I see it working. So I think we pass this ordinance tonight. We continue to work on those other services that are, are working great for a lot of people, but could work great for even more people. And I think this ordinance is actually going to connect a lot of those people that need those services or should be using those services to those services.
Thank you. Last call. Mr. Chesek?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody as well, you know, emails, phone calls, testimony tonight. It seems like this is the, the monster, the ordinance. It's the monster. It's gonna, it's gonna make everybody a criminal, and it occurs to me that everybody's talking about postponing this until we can come up with a solution. And yet, at the same time, everybody's talking about how long, the years. And yet, at the same time, everybody's talking about how long, the years, literally decades, we've been dealing with the same issue everywhere. So waiting a month or two till the place, warming shelter or overnight shelter is open, it just seems to be like, you know, we're just kicking the can down the road, and I trust our Brainerd Police Department. These are men and women that live in our community that are compassionate. Read some of the reports the chief puts out. Previous chief bestial, all these fantastic things, and officer of the bouillabwort. How many times do we see these fabulous things that are done by your officers on the street that help people? It's not going to be like this stormtrooper dragging, throwing out the dragnet across the city to corral everybody up and send them down to the jail. It's just not going to happen. And it's a little disappointing, to say the least, that I sit here and I feel like I'm suffering from the disease of being virtue signaled. I don't like that. And I don't know who does. We're not trying to criminalize people. We're trying to help our police to do the job that they're not able to do without this ordinance. Call it what you want. Call it criminalizing people. It's not going to do that. You can disagree with me all you want. I trust our police. They're going to do the best job they can do to help people that they encounter and able to help them with this ordinance. I called it compassionate the last time we talked about this, and that's what it is. It's to help people. Thank you, Mr. Bevins.
Okay. Last call. Anybody have anything else? Okay. We'll close council testimony. We have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1571. We have a second. We've discussed it. Tony, please call the roll.
Chesak?
Yes.
Oday?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Stingline?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, the motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 9, new business. If you're here for the homeless stuff, you're certainly welcome to leave. We'll give you a minute. But please go quickly and quietly. Yeah, I'm going to just ask them right now. Mr. Krampic or Mr. Dean, we have an item under new business, request from Public Utilities, but we have no information on the charging station. Is that for tonight, or can we put that off?
I think Tony can answer that question.
Tony?
It is not for tonight.
Okay, so that's like in the extended new business?
Future business.
All right, future business. Then we will move on to Item 9, new business. 9A is considering an interim use permit for a short-term rental at 1123 15th Avenue. I'm going to guess this is Mr. Krampic. Lo and behold, Mr. Krampic, anything you can add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Michael Fish has applied for an interim use permit on behalf of the property owners for 1123 15th Avenue Northeast. The property is a single-family home located on Rice Lake and is located in the TN1 zoning district. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and considered the request at their July 17th regularly scheduled meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the interim use permit with conditions listed in the recommended motion. Concerned neighbors did show up to the meeting and spoke specifically about the previous homeowners and the loud parties held at the property and were generally not in favor of the permit. The previous owners lived at the residence. It was not a rental. The commission has recommended conditions along with the house rules to help alleviate concerns of the neighbors and didn't feel comfortable holding Mr. Fish and the new owner is responsible for bad behavior of the previous owners and that this would hopefully be a better fit for the neighboring properties. So with that, Planning Commission recommended approval of the interim use permit with the following conditions. The short-term rental cannot operate until there is an approved inspection by the housing inspector and fire marshal. The interim use permit for a short-term rental terminates one year after approval. All outdoor lighting fixtures shall meet the standards of Section 515-4-8 Outdoor Lighting of the zoning code. Boat docking, mooring, and beaching shall only occur within property lines as if extended into the lake. Dock size and configuration shall comply with all applicable state regulations, which would be specifically the DNR. The property and all accessory structures shall conform to the City of Brainerd Shoreland ordinance. Overnight guest vehicles and trailers must be parked in the driveway. And the last one, staff is recommending that is not in the condition that we have done under other previous interim use permits for short-term rentals is they must file a required lodging tax with the City of Brainerd monthly. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krampic. Any questions of staff? We'll start on, I heard on this side. Mr. Johnson?
Just one quick question on the boat docking, mooring, beaching shall occur only within property lines as if extended into the lake. I get the beaching part. Maybe you get the docking part, but how is the City of Brainerd going to enforce a rule on mooring in public waters?
So there would have to be documented cases. It would be as part of the conditional use permit. We couldn't issue fines or anything like that. Those would be state regulations. But certainly documented cases or pictures could be shown that, you know, boats are in the way of other properties and affecting other property owners.
So we could deny future interim use permits if we get photos?
If we get complaints and photos, yeah.
In front of their house?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Carrie, did you have, okay, Mr. Chesak?
Yes, James, does this individual, Mr. Fish, does he have any other rental, short-term rentals in the City of Brainerd?
He does, and there has been no issues with that property.
And where's that located?
That one's in North Brainerd. I don't know the exact address.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, we are charged with either denying or approving the interim use permit with or without the seven
Move to approve with the conditions, including the one with the taxing, the local option, I believe?
Second.
That's not, okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve with the eight conditions, a second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion?
One thing, Mr.?
Yep. Mr. Chesak?
I got to say that the individual, I think, is going to do this neighborhood a lot of good if, unless, I guess, there's always a risk of having renters that may not comply with the rules, but he seems to be, based on what he testified to, and the rules are very strict, and I think the neighbors will be happy with this gentleman's short-term rental based on what they've experienced for the last, it looks like, couple of years or so.
Thank you. Tiffany Stingline?
I just wanted to also speak to Mr. Fish being involved in this. He actually brought some of the conditions that the Planning Commission put forward. He actually brought them to us through his house rules. So I think he is on board with where we want to be on this.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve with the eight conditions, including paying the lodging tax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 9B is consideration of a conditional use permit for a childcare center expansion at 418 8th Avenue Northeast. Mr. Krampic?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is submitted by TCC. The amendment is to increase the size of the fenced area per the requirements of the Minnesota Department of Human Services. An additional request is to be allowed for the ability for classroom expansion within a year. Planning Commission conducted the public hearing and considered the request at their July 17th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the CUP with staff recommendations. Number one is approved inspections and review by the fire marshal and building official prior to operation. The expanded six-foot fence will be the same color as the existing fence, and approval of the CUP amendment without any future occupancy limitations to existing classrooms in with, existing classrooms in the building, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Bev?
Mr. Chesak?
Yes, James, I called James today and I had something else, and now I thought of it. With the expansion of this yard, how far away will the edge of it be from Highway 210?
It will still meet setbacks within that area. I don't have the exact distance on that.
And the reason I'm asking is the improvement they're going to do, I believe in 26 now, the start of that. I'm not sure which end is going to come first, but does that look like any potential there for the setback issue of any sort that you can think of?
There would not be.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr.?
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? I'm sorry, did we have a motion on this?
I will make that motion.
All right, move to approve by Stingline, second by Chesak. Any questions on the motion? Comments? Hearing none. Mr. Padault?
Do we know how many kids this is going to look to expand to?
So right now, they're doing classrooms with eight children in each of them. So if they do add another classroom like they're planning on, it would add an additional eight children.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Stingline, a second by Chesak, all in favor of approving the conditional use permit with the three conditions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the outdoor storage for crypto mining. Item 9, new business. 9C, consideration of an ordinance prohibiting outdoor storage for crypto mining, data centers, AI centers, and similar uses in outdoor storage. I actually asked to put this on the agenda, and I'll allow James to give a contradiction to what I'm asking, but it just, if he wishes, but it just seems like if it's something that we wish to consider, we should let staff know. And really, it's for anybody potentially or existing crypto mining, if you don't like it in outdoor storage. And EDA is meeting on an applicant that wishes to mine crypto mining, that's already been turned down for an interim use permit, then it would be, I think, everybody would appreciate if we told them that upfront. We just aren't interested in it. And I really have to turn to James, so y'all understand how this came about in the first place. This allowable ability came about by a past community development director just presuming that crypto mining was an acceptable part of manufacturing, correct?
So, yeah, so it was, that it would be acceptable between either manufacturing, warehousing, depending on what type of crypto mining, data storage, usage would be essentially. Because they had presented the idea of containers, that's where the outdoor storage part came, and that it would be a principal use because it's really, that's the only thing there is, the containers. So that's what was required of the IUP. We do have another crypto mining within the city where they have a large 20,000 square foot building. Theirs is considered an accessory use. You know, if we do look at an ordinance potentially for this, there'd be some grandfathering in there. They wouldn't be allowed to expand their outdoor storage as an accessory use to that property.
Thank you. So my, Mr., no, this is literally a discussion item. The only motion I think that would be acceptable would be a direction to staff to look into the possibility of not allowing this. Or some, I mean, or something, at least a definition. So Mr. Johnson's up, and then Tiffany's got a comment, and I think discussion is appropriate on this. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, mine is a question. So you said the existing one would be grandfathered in with their outdoor storage as a primary use without an IUP?
Theirs would be grandfathered as an accessory use.
But it's a separate, their outdoor storage is a separate parcel from their primary building, which is what VCV proposed to do. So why are we treating two different businesses differently?
So I have looked at that. You know, typically, in our past, we've looked at a property like school property. We haven't required consolidations. I think when we get the final, we're working on a kind of a final grading permit for this property, I would request a consolidation at that point where they can consolidate the three properties, and everything would be all in one.
Which they have not done. So they have primary use of outdoor storage going on right now, and we're not going to do anything about it?
So we are, I am going to require that they consolidate the properties. That's something that I've looked at doing as a community development director since I took over. You know, even 10, 15 years ago, that's not something that was historically done. You still see a lot of our school properties that are looked as a common, one common area. So that, cities do sometimes do that. Other municipalities do require the consolidation. So that's something that I'd like to see moving, be done moving forward, and that's something I'm going to require of them.
All right, thank you.
Tiffany Stingline, then Mike Oday?
James, I know that the Planning Commission has talked about sound-based ordinances. How, if at all, would this interact with that? Would we, I kind of feel like this is like one small thing, but we're wanting to work on this bigger thing? And I'm not sure if that's 100% making sense to you, but you're nodding, so I'm going to say yes.
Yeah, so there's a couple of options here. So staff did provide in here, one of the options would be to direct staff to draft an ordinance for the Planning Commission to consider and conduct a public hearing, so staff could draft that ordinance based on your direction tonight. And the Planning Commission could hold a public hearing. They could change it, but the public hearing would be held on it, or they could recommend changes to city council. The other option would be to direct Planning Commission to just look at it and consider it and not direct an actual ordinance. And I guess the third option, I know it's in our itinerary to look at crypto mining as a whole, potentially sound as well. I do think the Planning Commission is eventually interested in looking at crypto mining. Right now, we're working on design standards within the City of Brainerd in conjunction with the Commercial Corridor District and potential mixed-use development in there. So that's currently on the itinerary, so there's kind of three options here. You know, kind of, do you wait for it as, for the next itinerary option, look at crypto mining as a whole and potentially create a separate use section, inner allowed use section, that outlines a whole bunch of different restrictions? Do you just direct staff to create an ordinance and have Planning Commission hold the public hearing? Or do you direct Planning Commission to begin discussions on it?
Tiffany?
I feel like I had another question, but I lost it.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? That's right, Mike Oday, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to bring this back as an ordinance or a change to our ordinances or our code, whichever way we want to do this, but we know that it's an issue to have this outdoor-style bitcoin mining or crypto mining, obviously, with what we just went through this, these last couple of months. We do have one that's operational that doesn't really receive any complaints that I know of, but who knows if it could in the future, if we could nail that out. I don't want to treat two different businesses differently. If they're required to put it in a building, or if we can figure out whatever issues we have to, and then they get grandfathered in without any complaints, I just don't want to see the expansion of it. I think one advantage to having this indoors is if bitcoin or crypto mining does just pick up and leave and skip town like they have in so many other places that you read about, at least there's a building left over. At least there's some value left on the land other than just a handful of cement pads that somebody's going to have to come in and rip out. So I think it's, it shows a sense of investment into that property that we would require.
Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I think I got a question here related to indoor storage. So, and I know I may be getting ahead of here, but if there's a proposal to build an indoor storage facility, nothing would prevent that facility from moving up, would it? Going higher in that structure that we have on our elevation of the building or anything like that?
So we do have height restrictions. That's all they'd be, I guess, limited to, and then any, I guess, applicable building code requirements or fire requirements.
Okay, so if they propose to do a two-story warehouse-type structure, is there, do you know the limit off the top of your head what height restrictions are right now?
I want to say it's maybe 45 feet in the industrial zone. It still would have to be approved by, on that lot specifically, by the EDA, because those would be part of the construction plans.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? The only one I had is it would just be nice, if you know you don't want crypto mining or AI in and outdoor storage, I think it would be beneficial to let people know. I'm a little shocked that we violated, that Mr. Johnson just brought up, that we violated our own ordinance with the first crypto miners. I'm shocked. I actually believe another appropriate direction to staff would be to notify the crypto miners that they're in violation of the outdoor storage ordinance and that they have to remove them. That is what we did to the other ones. I mean, I'm a little bit, I'm surprised that we allowed them to do it on a separate piece of property. I understand that now, after the fact, they could put it together and fix it, but that's not fair. That's not right, and that's not following our ordinance. So I'm a little disappointed to find out that that didn't happen, but I can't make a motion, or I might consider directing staff to notify that they're in violation of our ordinance. Not that they have to get around our ordinance by combining their property, but they are literally in violation of the same ordinance that we just denied the other crypto miners. So, anyway, it's up to you guys to decide if you want to return this to staff with direction or not. or not. I thought it wasn't important to have the discussion, and better sooner than later, since the EDA is going to consider a PDA amendment, or, or at least learn about it tomorrow night at a workshop. Mr. Beavins? Yeah, Kara had her hand up first, Jeff.
Just gonna make the motion, so if he has any other.
I just got, yeah, I, I, I'm not, I thank you, Mr. Johnson and Kelly. Um, but are we indeed in violation? Is that, is that ordinance been violated at the current crypto mining operation?
In, you know, certainly I discussed in past pre, you know, past precedents from, you know, other municipalities and what we've done. Uh, you know, if that's in violation, there'd be multiple schools that are violating, um, you know, the consolidation. So, so that's, you know, that's how staff's interpreting that, is we're gonna ask them to clean that up. I've been doing that as a staff member, uh, or as, as a community development director is requiring this. We've contacted them. We've let them know they're in violation of the grading permit. I know Jesse's working on that part with Wood Seth, so we're gonna get that all, all cleared up at once. So they are, they do know that they're in violation and, and we're acting them to, asking them to, to rectify the situation.
Okay, so there's a grading issue, elevation and grading, correct?
There is.
Okay, and so, that being said, you said you, staff can, um, without council, direction, can enforce that. Is that my understanding? You don't, you wouldn't need a direction from council to do as it's being discussed here?
So we're, yeah, we're already, we're already working through the correction process, which, you know, typically happens if they're not complying at that point. That's something we'd bring to city council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beavins.
Kara Terry has a motion.
I do. I would like to direct staff to draft an ordinance for the planning commission, consider and conduct a public hearing at their August 21st meeting for an ordinance that would prohibit outdoor storage for crypto mining facilities, data centers, AI centers, and similar uses.
Second.
Motion by Terry, second by Stunek. Any discussion on the motion? I like this motion. I, I, I think it's, it, and I think our, any potential or existing crypto miners will like it too, because then they'll know. Any further discussion?
So, um, is this specific to outdoor storage? I missed it if it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Doesn't address anything but outdoor storage.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, again, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else on this? Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We will go to, uh, item 10, public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda, so you can't talk about home, uh, unhoused or crypto mining, to the attention of the council. And we'd like to have you keep it to about three minutes. If you're on, and it's, uh, 9:43 and I open the public forum, if you're online, star three will notify to the council that you wish to speak. Star six will unmute you. Welcome. Please state your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
Kevin Query, 427 Cedar Street. I come again with concerns about the condition of our city streets. It was maybe six months ago that I came and talked. And again, I have, for the second time within six months, I had a flat tire last week. Uh, I don't know that people of the city realize the conditions unless they're a pedestrian, unless they're riding bikes. Um, I know that there's been some street work this summer that has left some dirt and debris in the street, but beyond that, there is broken glass, there is plastic, there is metal parts that get left on the side of the street that is not taken care of by the large street sweepers that we already have in the city. So, uh, I think it was Mr. Chesek that used the expression kicking the can down the street. I would ask that the city council or a member of the city council make a motion, take some action tonight, requesting that the public works director do, do, or provide a report at least by the end of September to the council on two matters. One, what is the cost of the mini street sweepers going to be? I provided every member of the council brochures from three of the major manufacturers of these street sweepers, so you, you have an idea of what we're talking about. Uh, I think we need to get a better idea of what the cost might be for the city to pursue this. And giving the public works director some time to gather those numbers might be good. Second part of the report I would request is for him to, uh, assess where the funding would come from to purchase this, exploring with Minnesota Department of Transportation, with Federal Department of Transportation, and other fundings, uh, avenues for the city, uh, where the likelihood would be of getting funding to purchase a mini street sweeper. That's what I would request.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. Any, anything else?
No, I'm just wondering.
That's it. You got that, you got it. Thank you. Anybody else who has something for us this evening? Anybody, nobody is online, so I'll ask a final time if there's anybody who wishes to come forward for public forum. And at 9:46, I will close the public forum. We'll go on to item 11, staff reports. Uh, I'm gonna turn over to this side and go to Chief Davis, see if he's got anything.
Nothing additional. Thank you.
ITGIS Director Strong?
One thing tonight, I should let you know, our station manager at the college departed for a better opportunity last week, so we don't have anyone running our station, quote unquote. So I'll be pretending to till his replacement arrives. So there won't be as much content on the, uh, public access channel for a while, and we're all sorry for that. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go online to Eric Sharpentier from the HRA.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Connie Hillman, Finance Director.
Yes, next Tuesday, August 13th is the primary election. There isn't a race, a city race on our primary. However, by state statute, the city still must conduct the primary election. So all of our polling places will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Can I ask her a question about that? Absolutely. Mr. Chesek? Being that we have such a low turnout, Connie, on primary elections, why do we house the full contingent of our polling places, whereas like with the 2018 school referendum, I, I, I know we only, that was about cut in half. Was that a consideration or is that ever considered for primaries?
We have to use the same locations and have to note those locations. We are lower staffing them. We only have four to five judges at each location for the primary. Whether for the general, we'll probably have seven to eight people, judges. So we do lower it, but we have to keep all eight precincts open.
Thank you.
Or get rid of the primary.
Even if we do get rid of the primary, if the state has one, we still have to conduct the state primary, regardless if this is, if there's a city race.
So thoughtful.
Jesse Dean, City Engineer, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. So then next couple of weeks, our public work maintenance staff is gonna be assisting with some, uh, street closures for a couple night out events. Uh, I'll let you kind of make some of the details for your event, uh, coming up next, uh, tomorrow. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there's a couple of them coming up here in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Kravik, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a reminder, the EDA will be having a workshop with BPU Commissioner and council members present to discuss VCV's newest proposal and provide comments. This is tomorrow at 5:00 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. City Attorney Lango? HR Director Schubert? All right, let's go to item 12, Mayor's Report.
All right. Well, Kelly, I'll let you talk about the night out you got going on here. Uh, but as, uh, Jesse alluded to, there are two events happening, uh, in the next two weeks. Uh, Kelly will talk about one. The other one is gonna be on Thursday, the 15th, at Gregory Park. That is the North Brainerd Night Out, which is a fantastic event. Um, and I believe this year, they're putting the vehicles on the street.
Yep.
Big old fire trucks, not in the park, but on the street. It's a novel idea. It'd never been tried before. Uh, but next to that, I'd just like to say that, uh, this last, was it two weeks ago, uh, Nick? Sorry, um, Administrator Broyles. Uh, we attended a, uh, event for Sheridan, which is Bang Printing, celebrating 125 years in our city. And so we went and, uh, uh, listened to them talk about their journey. Really cool to hear about a business that's been here for so long and how, uh, it's really just a family business, but has exploded to be worldwide. And so we were gifted a T-shirt with 125 years on the back that I said that we would place in our display case downstairs. So I'm gonna set that here, and then someone, I won't say who, can put that in the display case. But thank you to them, and thank you for their continued efforts of being here in Brainerd. Huge facility. They are actually working on books that, uh, will be on the shelf soon that are of national significance, which is very cool. And it's just a cool story to hear of. Uh, and then lastly, August 22nd, Thursday, at Mill Stadium, police versus firefighter softball game, ladies and gentlemen, it is happening. We will have the police officers, we will have the firefighters duking it out for Paul Bunyan's bat, if it makes it on time. Uh, but we're gonna have a lot of fun with it. It is in an effort to raise a little bit of funds for Mill Stadium. We get a lot of, uh, funding that comes through for the parks. However, there are just some little things here and there that we can do to make a big difference. That's such a great asset. Um, and so we decided, let's get the folks that are keeping us safe and give them an opportunity to get out there and shine. However, we're also gonna make it a circus atmosphere and make it a lot of fun for families. Uh, it is Thursday, August 22nd, so it'll be in just a couple of weeks here. Uh, free for children up to 18. We're gonna charge five bucks for adults. Just try to raise a little bit of funds. And again, there's just some little things in Mill Stadium that we could tweak. One of the requests we had since we replaced the fence in there was maybe some screening behind the pitching mound. So little things like that. If we can raise a little bit of money for that and give us an opportunity to celebrate with our, uh, police and firefighters, uh, we're really excited for that. So 6:00 PM is the national anthem, uh, so we'll begin starting right at then. And we're hoping that would be about two and a half hours if we can make it swing. But the idea is to make it fun for everyone that's involved. We get to make fun of these folks while they're out there swinging a bat, uh, but also it's for a great cause. And again, a great opportunity for us to celebrate with our, uh, you know, our police and firefighters. So, thank you.
Calling balls and strikes?
I will not. I threw out the first pitch of a, uh, All-Star game.
I'll do it.
You want to call balls and strikes? Well, we're gonna make it a really big strike zone.
You want to have fun? That'll be fun.
We'll do it by ear.
Do it by ear.
Jeff has a good one, I think.
That is team spirit, Jeff. Thank you.
End of report.
All right, we gotta jump back to staff reports. I forgot the new guy, Administrator Nick Broyles, sitting right next to me. Hasn't said a word all night.
I was, you know, I thought I might get through one meeting without talking, but no such luck. Just a couple of items. I'll make a brief. I do have my six-month review coming up in about a month. Uh, I've been working with Chris. This is my first iteration through this process, so, uh, it's a new process for me, but fairly straightforward. She asked me for all of my inputs in the right format. I gave that to her. So my intent, um, with the council's concurrence would be have this process to have my review completed in closed session on September 3rd. Uh, Chris will distribute all of my comments and the proper forms to all of the council members by the end of this week. And I think she'll probably, and she'll put this in the email, but she'll probably be asking for information back from council members by August 23rd for the September 3rd closed session. The, the second thing I wanted to mention was, we did have an airport meeting, uh, on, on August 1st out at the airport. It was very well-attended. Um, we had several representatives from the FAA, primarily out of the Bismarck office, but I think there were some maybe from the metro area as well. Um, we also had two members of city council there. We had two members of the county commission, and we had two members dual-hatted, um, from the airport commission. So talked a lot about process. FAA gave a lot of good information. It was really about process. Obviously, council has directed staff to explore divesting themselves from the airport. So that was what prompted this whole conversation. FAA talked a lot about process. There's a CERT 139, and the CERT 139 is what the airport has to have in order to operate. So that's the biggest thing. We need to make sure we meet all the requirements for that. Most of it was operational financial implications, grant assurances, honoring grant assurances. A couple takeaways from that. If the council does decide to divest, obviously this has to be a joint decision between the council and the commission. They will, everybody will have to agree. The example they gave that this might take up to a year to get this done. Um, so we're, we'll have to work through, through some of that. The last thing I have regarding that is, um, I have not talked with the county administrator since this meeting on Friday. Um, I'm having an appointment with her on Wednesday, so we're just gonna discuss from their, her staff's perspective and our staff's perspective, how we want to make presentations to our elected bodies. So that'll be forthcoming. And the last thing I have, I was approached by Sourcewell, and they have asked me to serve on their Board of Trustees. Basically, the Board of Trustees executes the contracts for group employee benefits and financial management contracts. Um, basically, very, very low impact. It will not impact my city duties. It's five meetings a year. They start at 4:00 PM. Um, four, one, one meeting a quarter, then they have an annual meeting, but they all start at 4:00 PM. So it will not impact my city duties. I think it will be a benefit to the city to have, be just build some bridges. Additional bridges with Sourcewell. So unless the city council has any strong objections, I'd certainly like to pursue that. That's all I have.
Let them know you're accepting.
Pardon me?
When do you have to let them know you're accepting if you do?
They, their next meeting, their annual business meeting where they elect the new member is August 20th, so.
I'd just like to make an addendum to that. You can attend, however, you cannot go work for Sourcewell. They have a tendency to take a lot of employees. No, please don't. So if you commit to here, you can be on Sourcewell.
I, I think it was part of his contract that he can never quit.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Then I don't have to worry about it.
So we, we'll have time to redress that.
Thank you. Um, anything else? Okay, let's move on to council member reports. We'll start with, uh, Gabe Johnson.
Nothing to add.
Kara Terry?
Nothing.
Chief Stunek?
He took all my, I was, for once, I was gonna speak about the airport, and he took it all. But I agree with him. So there, I have nothing.
Mike O'Dea?
Sure. Um, nice, long meeting tonight. I hope everybody enjoyed it first. Um, and I do want to just request, I don't know if I want to make a motion, um, but as SPW Chair, we had a request to, uh, just review some things about, um, our street sweeping. So no rush to do it this month, next month. Maybe sometime by the end of October. Maybe we should visit that subject, see, just a, a quick report on where we're at for street sweeping year-round, what equipment we have, and if staff has any suggestions on making it more efficient. I will just say, I might not have said that if I didn't drive into a, a bunch of glass where I parked for work this morning. And that's not our staff's fault. Our staff does a great job. Uh, they work hard on keeping our streets as clean as they can with the, with, with the group that they have and the equipment that they have. But if we can make things better, we're always looking for ways to do it. So if we could maybe visit that this fall, let's go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Tiffany Stingline?
Uh, well, the Viking Festival is coming up this weekend, so hope to see some folks there.
At the Fairgrounds?
At the Fairgrounds on Saturday.
Are there actual Vikings?
Yeah. No horns. Real Vikings, no horns.
Thank you. Jeff Chesek? Thank you, President Beavins. I just want to send out a thank you to our, um, rental housing inspector, Jason Stockinger. Um, he had some communications with some people that are near and dear to my heart, and they are very, very happy he took their, uh, concerns. And, uh, I did have another item here that, uh, um, uh, when we look at what we do here, um, we have a public forum, and, um, every individual can come to this microphone in our community, anybody, every individual. Uh, they can be four years old or 400 years old, and minors, seniors, adult, you know, anybody. And what I'm getting at here is, uh, I've been called a liar, Mr. Beavins, and maybe some of us at the table have too and don't even know it. Um, an opinion letter that appeared in our Brainerd Dispatch started out this way. The GOP and their followers have continue, continue to tell lies about HF1, the PRO Act. And it says, the, here's the entire text of the bill. Please tell me, please let me know where that bit about sterilizing minors located. Well, if you read the text, which was so graciously included, it says definitions, includes sterilization. I'm mentioning this because I brought this up before about a year ago after the 2023 legislation passed. It includes sterilization. The next subdivision says every individual applies to this statute. Every individual includes minors. I don't like be called liars. I don't like being called a liar. And that's what this opinion letter is doing. Now, the person who wrote this can go around and tell everybody she Now, the person who wrote this can go around and tell everybody she wants that whoever is saying that this bill is not true, it doesn't allow sterilization of minors, that's fine. But when our newspaper reports that, prints this, now we have a problem. And I'm calling out our Brainerd Dispatch to do a better job, because I'm not lying. This bill does allow for the sterilization of minors. But when you read the very first line, the text is in there, you're kind of gonna say, hey, look at, Sally Booze says it's true. The GOP is lying, and they're not. Thank you, Mr. Beavins. Thanks, Mr. Chesek. And as the mayor mentioned, I'll be at, well, I'll be at the EDA workshop tomorrow night, and I'll also be at the A-National Night Out event for the downtown neighborhood, 8th and Norwood, bounce houses, fire trucks free, hot dogs, homeless or not. So that's from 5:30 to 7:00, sponsored by First Lutheran Church.
Fire trucks parking.
Norwood Street will be closed between 7th and 8th.
On the street.
On the street.
Never been tried.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is, we're looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session per Minnesota Statute 13D.05, subdivision 3C.3, to discuss potential sale of city-owned parcel for 1010545. Is there a motion? Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn to closed session. Mr. Chesek, second by Mr. Stunek. All in favor, say aye. And we will take seven minutes to get everybody out of here.